Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our October 8th meeting. Could I have a motion to return from executive session? We're back in public session. Could we stand for the flag salute? Could I have a motion for approval of the minutes for the September 24th meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion, a second. We have done, we have two abstains for Chris and for Jerry. And now those are part of the record. Donna, correspondence.
The first one on the agenda, we have a letter, and this is Brock Cassini. And we have included our Oprah request from July. The date, the requester's name, the subject, and the staff.
I'm muted. Someone said they can't hear Donna?
Okay. The first one consists of a donation from Mrs. Brock Cassini. And we have included our Oprah requests. These are the Oprah requests that we have received since July. We have the date, the requester's name, the subject, and the status.
Okay, thank you. Let me just expand on that for one minute. For those that don't know, Oprah stands for the Open Public Request Act, which is the ability of a resident to request documents of the school board for certain government records. And going forward, in an element of full transparency, we will be listing which Oprah requests we get, and it'll be a standard part of our correspondence going forward. With that, we'll move to the report of the superintendent, Dr. Varley.
Good evening. We have been in school for over six weeks. I am very proud for the staff and students for going above and beyond. I'm happy to report that we brought back our full-day kindergarten students every day for a half-day. I have visited the classroom a couple of times, and everyone is extremely happy. Thank you to Ms. Paneris and Ms. Fisher for working so hard to get the classroom ready for all the students. This year is a challenge for everyone, and we will only get through it if everyone keeps working together and doing their part. We must remain diligent in our efforts to stay safe and healthy so that we can continue to keep our schools open for as much in-person instruction as possible. As districts around us close for a couple of weeks at a time, I am sure that we will experience the same thing. I am committed to keeping the community updated on information regarding our cases as information becomes available. This past Saturday, in my effort to coordinate the timing of my announcement with the mayor, I pulled information from Power School but was unable to confirm it with the building principal. Unfortunately, the Power School information was incorrect. I sent a follow-up with a message with the correct information as soon as possible. I also realize that many of you want more specific information. I want to make it clear, moving forward, that I will try to balance the health and safety of the students and the staff with the privacy of the family involved. In situations where a student has not been in school for more than 10 days, then there has been no exposure to students and staff through school. It is then the obligation of the family to inform those they have been in contact with. We do work with the Department of Health and Contact Tracing when it is a school-focused event. I know you will all join me in wishing a speedy recovery for the students who are ill. I have spoken with at least 20 parents who are planning to go to Florida or other states that are currently on Governor Murphy's quarantine list over the teachers' convention-long weekend. In all of these conversations, everyone has been very understanding of the need to keep students in remote following these trips. As the holiday season approaches, it is also apparent that this will be a recurring issue. In trying to work with families while still maintaining a safe and manageable attendance policy for hybrid learning, the two weeks after teachers' convention, Thanksgiving, and winter break will be quarantine periods where students who travel and need to work remotely can do so. When the quarantine period ends, students must report to school with their designated cohort. Students who did not travel will be expected to report to school with their designated cohort. The end dates for the quarantine periods are November 23rd, December 14th, and January 18th, respectively. I will publish this. You're not expected to remember it. I hope that this helps families navigate this dilemma. In other news, the state has mandated that school districts must be remote on November 3rd, regardless of their polling status locations. Location. Principal, principals will be notifying all families in the near future, very near future. So our buildings will be completely remote on November 3rd, so that everyone understands that. I know it has been a long seven months since the pandemic began. I know that everyone is tired of wearing masks and social distancing and all the other disruptions to our lives. But history tells us that in the late fall and early winter, with everyone moving back indoors and the onset of the cold and flu season, we will see an increase in the number of COVID-19 cases. It is already starting to happen in the communities around us. The more diligent everyone is in wearing their masks and social distancing, the safer everyone will be, and the more likely we can keep our students where they need to be, in school. With that, I have been receiving a great deal of feedback on our current schedules as what, from teachers, from parents, from students. Tomorrow, I will be sending a survey to our staff and our students, grade 6 through 12, to get feedback on our current model. We will use that feedback to decide what our next steps will be. I will be meeting with the admin team next week to flesh out the details. More information is coming soon. Thank you for your patience and understanding as we continue to pivot and make changes. Thank you. And now I will turn it over to Chrissy Zahn. She is going to do a report of incidents of violence, vandalism, substance abuse, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, as well as a review of our self-assessments. This is a state-required presentation that must happen annually for the board.
Hello, just bear with me as I get this presentation out. Are we good? Can see it? Are we good to go? Okay. So tonight I'll be presenting the HIV Violence and Vandalism Report, which, as Dr. Varley said, we're required to do twice a year. Since we just had training at the board meeting last month with the board attorney, Frances Februs, I'm not going to be spending a lot of time reviewing the law. So this evening, I'll start by sharing the HIV and Violence and Vandalism numbers for reporting period 2, which runs from January 1 to June 30. Do you want me to pause or continue? I'll quickly review the HIV law. I'll talk briefly about the addition to our district HIV policy as of March 2020. I'll share the HIV data in terms of investigations and confirmed HIBs from reporting period 2 and provide an overview that for the 1920 school year, I'll touch upon the process for self-assessment that we are required to do yearly, which translates into our HIV grades. I'll share a list of programs and trainings. I'll highlight some of the activities for the Week of Respect, which is currently this week. And lastly, I'll share areas of focus for the 2020 school year. Sorry, I should have been tapping as I moved along there. So this chart shows our numbers of incidences in each of the following areas: HIV, violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse. So I don't think I need to point out all of the different numbers. You can see them there. I'll go into more detail about HIV. So what is HIV? It's a gesture, a written or verbal or physical act or electronic communication, whether it be a single incident or a series of incidents that is reasonably perceived as being motivated by any actual or perceived characteristics, such as race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity expression, sensory, mental, or physical disability, or other distinguishing characteristics. It has to take place on school property, at any school-sponsored function, or on a school bus or off-school grounds. It has to substantially disrupt or interfere with the orderly operations of the school or the rights of other students. And a reasonable person should know that it will have the effect of physically harming or damaging a student's property or placing them in reasonable fear of physical or emotional harm, has the effect of insulting or demeaning, and creates a hostile, or creates a hostile educational environment. So in March of 2020, we added to the district HIV policy. What was added was the principal's ability to do a predetermination in consultation with the anti-bullying specialist. So this means that a principal can take a look at the information that's provided when the incident is reported, and they look at the criteria to see if it meets the criteria that you need for a positive HIB. If it doesn't meet that criteria or won't meet that criteria, an investigation does not have to follow. Before we had this policy, we had to investigate everything, so we didn't really have a choice. So here's a list of our 1920 investigators at each of the buildings. They did a really great job. It's very time-consuming to do the investigations, and I know they all work really hard to do the best that they possibly can. And taking a look at this, once they get through their investigation, they are working with multiple options of what they can do with the students. And really, our district philosophy is to identify bullying behavior. We're not looking to call students bullies. We're looking to identify behavior. And then we work with the students to change that behavior. We want them to have the tools going forward to know what, you know, they should and should not be doing. So these are some of the ways that we support students. If it's very egregious, then we would move to some kind of detention or suspension. But for the most part, that is really not where we go. It's mostly counseling and really working with the student. So here is our reporting period 2 comparison. Now, again, we had, right in the middle of this period, COVID-19. So our numbers do look different than they have in years past, which is to be expected. We had to finish a few investigations remotely, and we did the best we could. We took the guidance from the state. We did have guidance from our attorney, and it turned out okay. There was a lot of anxiety in the beginning about that, but we did the best we could. So if we look at a year-over-year comparison, you can see that we've definitely had a decline this year. In fact, I don't believe we had any investigations once we went into lockdown. Just looking at the numbers year-over-year, this year we had approximately 33% of the investigations led to a positive HIB. They were different percentages in other years. There's not really a pattern as of this point. And looking at the data, I already mentioned that we did have a significant decrease. Our cases mostly targeted disability and other distinguishing characteristics. We had three incidents that we did not proceed to do, proceed with an investigation due to the preliminary determination by principal in consultation with the ABS. That was very helpful, especially during the closure, being able to walk through those different criteria and not having to do a full-blown investigation if we didn't need to. And our hotspots kind of continue to remain the same: hallway, cafeteria, classroom. Many of the ones that end up in the classroom actually start out in the hallway or in the cafeteria or in some unstructured setting. Let's see. And middle school continues to be the area with the most investigations. And in going to county meetings, I don't think we are alone in that statistic. So every year, we are also required to do a self-assessment each of the schools. This year, we got the rubric from the DOE in August. We did, the ABSs did do preliminary scores at the end of the school year using the 1819 rubric. And then at the beginning of this year, they took a look at the scores using the new rubric. It hadn't changed much. I met with each of them, and adjustments were made if they were warranted. We are waiting for guidance from the DOE regarding how to score items that are related to the timelines, because there were, we were told to suspend investigations. And then when we were told to resume them, we did fall within the timeline. But that was a question at a county meeting, so we're waiting to hear that response. Our final results will be due to the DOE by December 1, so we do have time to get that answer. And then we'll be using those scores as a basis for how we're going to focus for the 2021 school year. In that self-assessment, there are eight core elements. HIV programs, approaches, and other initiatives, training on the approved HIV policy, staff instruction, training programs, curriculum and instruction, personnel, school-level incident reporting, investigation procedure, and HIV reporting. So we saw our self-assessment results this year are great. We did really well. We have, all the schools are at 95% or above. And in years past, I'm told that we typically do score well. The dip in score, I think, last year had to do with a question as to whether suicide training was included with HIV and just some, maybe a narrow focus of training and programs, not really realizing that it's really anything that improves school climate and culture is included in your trainings and programs as counting toward what you're doing as a school and as a district. So this slide shows you the element scores for each building. The maximum, there's a column with the maximum score, our district average. So we all scored, all schools scored a 74 or above, which is great. So it was an improvement. I think that a huge part of that improvement was all the training we did with the board attorney and also looking at the other initiatives. We had a lot of SCL initiatives and cyberbullying. We will continue to focus on SCL. This year, obviously, is a big year for social-emotional learning, and we'll be using pre and post to help us guide how we're doing with that program. So here's a list of some trainings that we've done, we did throughout the year. I don't think you need me to read each of them, but there was many, many trainings. And here's a list of all the programs. And we do have to submit trainings and programs to the state every year of everything that we do. One of, we're also required by the state to do, to honor the Week of Respect and to have a focus that connects to HIV. So this year at GL, they're doing name tags and with pronouns. They're doing a diversity poster contest. I'm sure some of this is already happening as it's Thursday or happened already. Powerful commercials have been shared with them. They have new school year resolutions, cultural pride with a t-shirt hat or virtual background. At Columbia, their focus is on self-care. They're watching a TED Talk on asking for help, benefits of helping others, and learning new perspectives. Pajama Day with breathing and mindful exercises, connections via a Mad Libs activity, exercise and movement activity, and a forgiveness activity, letting go of perfectionism and learning from our mistakes. And then at the elementaries and the early childhood, their theme is the beauty of the world lies in the diversity of its people. They're doing, they have posters in the classroom to support the theme. They wore blue. This is also, October is National Bullying Prevention Month. They're going to do for each week in October, a unique, a different word, diversity, unique, inclusion, empathy. They have slideshows, and I know they've shared some information with parents and good books to read. So for the focus for this year, for this current school year, we will continue on the social-emotional learning focus with added in diversity. Obviously, we're going to use the surveys and data to improve our school culture and climate and to determine effectiveness. I think that was the one theme that came out of all my meetings with the anti-bullying specialists who had the school safety and school climate teams, that they felt they were lacking some kind of evidence. So a survey, pre and post, would help us with that. Cyberbullying continues to be a focus. I imagine that focus won't go away anytime soon. We will need to address remote investigations and support, you know, ABSs as they have to do those. If they have to do them with the hybrid model right now, I think we would opt to meet with students while they are in school. But in the event that we have virtual students, we need to do that. And also to continue to work through the principal's discretion in our district policy. That is, we're still tweaking the exact procedures of how that, we know what we're doing, but we don't, we just want to have set procedures. And I think as we do go through it more and more, it will, those things will become clearer and clearer. So that's it. Are there any questions?
How are our students adjusting back into the regular routine? It seems like they're not acting out. But what's your feel as far as our students as a group, like, regarding social-emotional issues and impacts?
I don't exactly have that feedback. I'm not sure if Dr. Varley or Scott want to share on that. But I will say that we haven't had, we did have one investigation at the beginning of this year, and it did have to do with cyberbullying. And it's a little bit of a concern that, you know, that we're not getting investigations, but that's also, you know, a positive thing as well. You can look at it either way.
Yeah, I'll take a social-emotional question, because I am hearing, I'm getting feedback from parents as, as the year continues, right? We're six weeks in, and most of them say that the children are very happy when they're walking into the, but then on the remote weeks, they are, by Wednesday, they're generally, not depressed. I knew that's a big term, but not as excited about school, because they, you know, they don't get the interaction with their teacher, face-to-face interaction, as well as the, with their classmates. So I can address that. But as of right now, knock on wood, the behavior in the classrooms I've been in has been fantastic. I think they're just happy to be there.
So, sure.
On page four, under what is HIV, it talks about, you know, what constitutes an HIB. Clearly, on school property, at a school-sponsored function, on a school bus, can you just clarify what off-school grounds mean?
So if there is an incident that happens off-school grounds, and our attorney highlighted this, that there has to be a nexus to how it affects the school. It has to come into the school and have an impact in some way. Let's say the children, something happens on, at a playground, Snyder Park or something, and then the kids are coming in and talking about it, and it's affecting the school day, and it's disrupting. There's a substantial disruption. That would be your nexus to it becoming an investigation. Now, if nothing was brought into the school, we don't investigate that.
So Chrissy, I had a question. So with all students going remote, whether they're being on the hybrid model or with a fully remote, are you seeing much bullying remotely? And what are the protocols for dealing with that?
I haven't seen, and nothing has come through, other than that one investigation that was earlier in the, actually, before school started. So I'm not getting that feedback that we are, and that is occurring. And if it is, we need to know about it. And I do believe that the teachers are on top of that and would report something right away if they were to see something. I think our staff is really good. In fact, I know they're really good. Just looking at the data, when they bring something forth, most of the time, it's a positive HIB, because they're very educated about what falls under the law. So I'm confident that if they were to see something, they would definitely pick up the phone and call. They need to contact the principal. By law, they must.
So any other questions from the board? Go ahead, Mike.
On the 2019-2020 results, when was that exactly?
So it's, they did it at the end of last year. It's for the 1920 school year. So they did a preliminary, because they were working off of the 1819 rubric, because the state hadn't given us the 1920 rubric. And then I asked them to all to take a look at it again this year, and we had some discussions. And if something, if they felt something shifted based on discussions, then we did that.
So they did it in?
In the beginning of this year, using the 1920 rubric. Yes.
Are there any other questions from the board? So Chrissy, Mike?
I just want to mention, so I think when the board asked Chrissy our questions, I think we all forgot to unmute.
No, 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 people were unmuted.
I was, I was on mute.
No, we're good. Angela and Mike both unmuted, so people could hear their questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I apologize. I think I was on mute. Just me. I'm the only idiot.
So Chrissy, my question is, and maybe you could just expand. So when I look at slides 17 and 18, I see 14 training sessions or types of training and 20 different programs. Clearly, that's too much for you to expand on, but that obviously is a, it just demonstrates how comprehensive our program is. Could you just talk and maybe selectively highlight one or two of the trainings that you think maybe are the newer ones that we did or are doing this year? Or one or two of the programs that you think are, you know, having the biggest impact? I certainly don't want you to go through all of them, but I do think it would be helpful for both the board and the public to just, again, selectively pick one or two and just highlight what those are and how they're making a difference.
Okay. Well, I definitely think that the trainings we had with the attorney for all the anti-bullying specialists and the administrators, I think that was definitely key. And I thank Dr. Varley for that, to initiate that. It's interesting, because different attorneys have different, you know, a different take on things. So it did give everyone the opportunity to ask questions and to really get a sense of the law, because it is tricky. It is a very tricky law. I thought that was great. Let's see. Definitely anything related to the social-emotional, I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback on that. I believe the cyberbullying program at the high school was well-received, and that was something that, I heard a lot of positive feedback about that. In the middle school, I know that the guidance counselors meet with their cohort of students weekly, and they're talking. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. I think it's weekly, but they meet with their groups. And I know those groups, I sat in on, one of them gave opportunities for students to talk in a much smaller setting and to address some of these things. And, you know, each building, and that's why the assessment is so important. Each building has their own unique needs. So we wouldn't want to give them training on something that necessarily doesn't, you know, pertain to them. So we wouldn't want to give them training on something that necessarily doesn't, you know, pertain to them. So I think that at each building, they do a really good job. The ABSs, the, the school safety, school climate teams, they really take a look at what are the needs of our building? And they infuse it really in, in almost everything they do.
Great, thank you. And I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure it's helpful to hear those. I know there's a lot more that goes on, so thanks for sharing. Great. Dr. Vayner, is there anything else in your superintendent's report?
That is the end of my superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. We will move on. I see we have now joined by our students, Emily and, and Thomas. Emily, I'll start with you. Welcome. Good evening. And do you want to share your, your representative report?
Yes. Okay. So the COVID sports seasons are off to a great start.
You're muted, Emily.
Oh, is it not working? Can you, can you hear me now? Okay, okay. The COVID sports seasons are off to a great start. The ticket system for home and away games have kept the community safe while still allowing all to come and support the teams. I know I have loved the chance to go to the games as well as many other students. Girls and boys soccer had their senior nights this past week and boys tied in double, double overtime. Both boys and girls soccer won their games this afternoon. Football started off their season strong with a win and are hoping to continue this Saturday at two for football and cheerleader senior day. The students are planning on making this a whiteout game in hopes to keep up the student spirit with the loss of F and L. Field hockey senior night is tomorrow at five at GL. We hope to see you all there. Go GL. And as a segue to Tomas, the executive board of student council is planning to create a two-week spirit week for Halloween in efforts to continue the tradition while including both school cohorts. All are excited for what's to come.
Great, thank you, Emily. Thomas?
Hello. In regards to clubs at GL, the club expo recently took place where over thirty clubs shared a brief overview of the main activities and purpose of the club. Even though it was held virtually, event was still a success as club gains new members. Clubs such as Science Olympiad, Auxiliary Club, Environmental Club, and Probing Club have made plans for introductory meetings in the coming weeks to welcome these new members. The math league team will host their first math competition next week. Interact held a car wash this past Sunday at Columbia Middle School and was able to raise it for $1,000 for the Center for Food Action. If anyone is wondering why Mr. Reinstein's car looked so clean, it's because his car was clean at the event. Spanish Club held their first meeting this past Tuesday to introduce their new officers and discuss plans for the first event of the year. Sena y cine, or dinner and a movie. Similarly, Photo Club and Italian Club and the newly formed Operation Smile Club held their first meetings this past week to define goals and events for the upcoming year. The beginning of October has also marked the beginning of week in respect. I don't mean to repeat too much, but numerous events were held this week to celebrate diversity, including the poster contest. And tomorrow, students will celebrate their cultural pride, their T-shirts and Zoom backgrounds that display their ethnic background. Now that clubs have adjusted to this new reality and held meetings with new members, they will begin working towards preparing themselves for events and competitions as they normally would.
Great, thanks. Well, to both of you, Emily, I'll start with you. Last time we saw you, two weeks ago, you had shared what the in-school experience was out, was, was like. And since both of you are early alphabet people, I know that you've now gone through the week of the remote experience. So why don't you just share a little bit about your experience from the remote week? Emily, we'll start with you.
Um, so I actually enjoyed being home for the week after being in school because it is a little tiring going from the four hours in school to the half an hour classes after school. It just seems like a long day. The weeks go quick, but the days go long. So when having the Zoom classes at home, it gives you kind of a break. I feel bad for the teachers because they don't get as much as a break as the students do because I definitely enjoy having the week on, week off because I love being in school, but I also love the luxury of being in my bed sometimes from school. So that's my opinion on it.
Yeah, everyone can agree that that week off where there's no commute, it's, it's great. But it's actually a great balance between being at home and being in person because the learning experience is undoubtedly better in school. And, but yet I still feel like the teachers have been able to develop methods and been able to maintain a similar level of education even at home and at school so that the level of learning is similar in both, in both environments.
How did, how did you find the interaction? So now you've been on both sides. You've been on the in-class and you've had to interact with the kids remotely. And now you've been on that. How did you find the interaction on both sides of that? When, if and when you had to interact with other students in your class?
You know, I can't deny that it's a little bit more strained in the, when you're virtual because you enter a setting. And also teachers are trying to maximize the time that they have in class because, you know, a lot more time is spent at the beginning of class to get class ready. So in that regard, it's a little bit more strange, but I, a lot of teachers utilize like breakout rooms through Zoom, which allow you to have those close and intimate, intimate conversations with people, which are very helpful. And, you know, it brings a sense of normalcy that you would expect in the classroom.
Yeah, I, I also agree with that. In statistics, I know we have group projects and my teacher kind of splits us up into groups that are at home and groups that are in class. So when we're in class, we can all work together, but when we're at home, he can put us in breakout rooms with the same group. So it kind of keeps the same pattern with that.
Great. Did the board, any board members have any questions for either Thomas or Emily?
Yeah, I'd like to just piggyback on that question. What are you finding the general feedback of students? Are they preferring the in-person or remote?
So I know my friends love being in school and I love being in school too. But again, how I said, we do like having that break for Zoom for the week off because it just gives you kind of like a week to reset because the teachers in school tend to put a little more strain on your work just because you don't get that much time in school. So they try to like push it further so you can learn more while you're in school and have that better learning experience. So then when you're at home, you can kind of catch up with that and have a little break. But I do think the half an hour classes after school are a little, maybe should be tweaked because I know some people have mixed views on that because the half an hour is super quick for classes. So it can't, it doesn't allow for much work to be done. And sometimes it just kind of wastes time or it just isn't like the most practical for most classes.
Yeah, I agree. There's, I mean, students are overall pretty content with the plan. I mean, it's difficult in this, in this situation. Nobody's been able to prepare for it. And, you know, we look at other, people look at other districts and, you know, they really admire the, the changes that we have made and implemented. So I think in that regard, people, people are happy, especially when they look at other districts. And another challenge that I think students are facing is, you know, when they have lab in the afternoon and they're taking the bus home, sometimes it doesn't give them enough time to really, or they might not even get home until after lab. But I think, you know, it's very difficult and only once, you know, we go full in person, it's going to be able to solve.
Great, great. So Emily?
Yeah, I have a question. So what is the overall thought on the school spirit? I've heard attendance at some of the senior games have been lower than past years. There's some disappointment with Friday Night Lights. So what's your, what's your thoughts and observations on that?
Um, I know a bunch of my friends have been trying to come out to all of the games. I know several of my friends who made it adamant that they get to every single game. I'm trying to go to as many games as possible as well. It's good to have the students give the tickets to our friends so we can get there. We're trying to get more people to come to games to get the school spirit up, but we don't always get the luxury with the ticket restrictions. But I know the seniors have been showing up to some of the games and not more so the underclassmen as they don't necessarily know about it as much and they don't have the nostalgia that it's their last year and no more games after this. But that's what I see.
I kind of, I saw it, you know, it's, it may not be as great, but I think people are still content. I mean, I live right near the high school. So when there was senior night the other night, I could hear all the crowds. I could hear the ceremony at the end. And, you know, it was pleasing to hear that. But I mean, I think, I think they've still been able to hold, you know, senior night as they normally would. And, you know, their close people have been able to come. But I think in general, students have been able, if they wanted to, to get to these events.
So Emily, I had a quick question for you. As a senior, how are you finding the virtual college visits? Have you been attending many of them?
Um, I've been to a few. It's definitely not, I haven't visited any of the colleges I'm applying to, which is kind of a bummer. Because you don't get the real sense of how the environment is and how the people are where you see. Because that's more what you look at, what I look at at least when I go to college visits. I kind of look at who's there and how they interact with the environment. So it's kind of missing out on that aspect of things. But colleges are doing a pretty good job on switching over to virtual while still keeping up with communication to get those, like admission offices talking with the students.
Any other questions from any other board members?
I, I don't have a question, but I, I would like to share an observation. I think, I think you guys are pretty amazing. You know, your flexibility and ability to deal with change and uncertainty while, you know, apparently maintaining, you know, quite a positive attitude throughout all of this. It's very inspiring. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Chris. Emily, Thomas, thank you very much. Thanks for, for being here and answering, you know, the questions. I know a lot of people want to hear firsthand from you guys. So, so thanks again. Okay, moving on, liaison reports. Does any of, any of the board members have liaison reports for tonight?
I do, Doug. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Helen.
Okay, New Jersey School Boards Association is running a series of special reports on school reopenings to share successful paths followed. The, a new position has been established in the Department of Education. It's the position of State School Nurse Consultant. And the purpose of that is to work with districts to facilitate best practices in these difficult times. Michael Vranek, Director of Governmental Relations, retired. Jonathan Pushman has been named as his replacement. And they are finalizing plans for Workshop 2020. Union County Educational Services Commission, they, the virtual program is going as well as can be expected. And staff and families are work, really working together to help the kids as best they can. They plan to bring all the special ed students back into the schools October nineteenth with a hybrid program very similar to ours, except that they will be serving breakfast and lunch using a grab and go style breakfast and lunch, and they will be bringing it into the classrooms. Projects Search, which is the program that goes on up at Overlook. There's no classroom space, so their classroom work will be done virtually. But the students will be reporting to Overlook to work in their apprentice programs in the various departments. They also signed a healthcare staffing agreement to provide substitute nurses for the programs. We not only provide nurses for our own schools at ed services. They do provide nurses for many of the private schools. The Environmental Commission Sustainable Jersey has selected Kimberly Diamond, a Berkeley Heights Commissioner, as this month's sustainable state, sustainability hero. She is truly an environmental advocate. The track benches, there are several being installed in Lower Columbia and two have been dedicated to Annie, and they will be placed in Upper Columbia because that's where she played ball. They are working with the township in the hope of revitalizing Columbia Park, especially the pathways that go around the part, park. A lot of that is wetlands area and it needs a lot of attention to make it yet another great place for recreation within the town. And we also viewed a presentation on meth, methane gas recovery. They plan to follow up, it does solve environmental concerns and could possibly be a financial initiative to bring some dollars into the community. That's the end of my report.
Great, thank you, Helen. Other, any other liaison reports by board members? Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, just trying to find the unmute. So the facilities committee met between the last board meeting and tonight. Donna will be providing a detailed update on the various projects. I'll leave it to her on her facilities report, not to steal any of her thunder. Moving forward, the committee will, to be continuing to work with Donna on developing the 2021, can't believe we're saying that already, projects for next summer on priorities and different project level. And also already starting the beginning of the 2021, 2022 project budgets for next year. So yes, we're only two months, three months, a month or two into the school year, but already starting to plan for next year. Very exciting times.
Great, thanks, Mike. Any other liaison reports? Okay, Donna, facilities.
Okay. As Mike mentioned, we did have a facilities committee meeting. And one of the things we discussed is our continuing efforts to improve the air circulation in the schools. Rooftop exhaust fans are scheduled to be installed at the Columbia multipurpose room, the Hughes multipurpose room, and the gyms at GL. This work is scheduled to begin the week of October nineteenth. We are continuing the process of repairing the window springs and where, this is being done at all schools. Another thing, another project that we're working on is at the middle school, we're upgrading the lighting in the multipurpose room. So we're replacing the current lighting with LED lighting. And as we're doing this, we're also cleaning the ceiling grid and we'll be changing out the ceiling tile. So there will be a big improvement to the Columbia multipurpose room. Some of the projects that the architect worked on that are done are the masonry wall repair at GL. The HVAC unit at the media center has been completed and we are continuing to work on the long-range facility plan, which is an inventory of all of the buildings and all of the spaces in our schools. Okay.
Great, thanks, Donna. Any questions for Donna on the facilities report? Okay, moving on, we will now open the, the citizens' hearing as, as a reminder. This will be the one citizens' hearing that we have this evening. As I've done in the, in the previous meetings, if you will, if you'll use the raise your hand functionality to be recognized, I will recognize you. Please ask all your questions upfront. Try to focus your questions to ones that are appropriate for the superintendent or, or the board. For those that are more focused on the details of school, like scheduling, logistics, technology, student issues, those are best directed to the principals. So with that, Mrs. Cogan is the first person that I see. I'm promoting you. If you could unmute and then share your questions. We just need, also need your first name.
Kathleen Cogan, forty-four Pine Grove Road.
Hi, Kathleen. Good evening. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Thank you for having the meeting virtually. It's, it's good to be there. I just have a couple of questions regarding Zoom and the attendance policy with the students. My experience with my students, first of all, I love that they are able to go to school. I wish they could go to school every single day. So whatever you guys need to do to make them back in school full-time is, you know, I would 100% support that. But we're noticing that there's some issues with Zoom when the children are home in the afternoon and even like in the morning when they're virtual. And it's gotten to the point where sometimes my children are locked out of classes and they can't get in. So I reached out to administration. I haven't gotten responses. I'm reaching out to you guys because if my child was late in a brick and mortar building, would they be denied access? So I just wish, I would hope that there's more communication between the teachers and the students and letting the children into the classes when they need to. So I don't know if that's something the board can look into, but that's a concern that I have here in my house with my children.
So Ms. Cogan, I can definitely take a look at that.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm good.
So I can take a look at that. I didn't realize this issue was happening. So I'll talk to Ms. Nardi tomorrow.
Well, actually, it's at the middle school. So.
It's in the middle school. Okay. All right. Well, I'll reach out to you and find out exactly where it's happening and we'll see what we can do to fix it.
Okay. Is there like a universe, is there, do the teachers have a Zoom ID that's unique to them? Meaning like I have one that's assigned specifically to me and anyone can click on it anytime, well, as long as I'm on and get to me specifically. Because that seems to be the problem. The children are left in the waiting room. They're not being let in. So I'm not sure what the deal is with that. So, and it's kind of piggies back off my other question is that, is there an expected time that when? that when parents reach out to either teachers or administrators that we should expect some type of acknowledgement?
24 hours unless it's a weekend or a holiday.
Of course. Okay, okay. Cause that's a concern that we have again here in this house. Because we've reached out to teachers and we've reached out to other people in school and either call this person, talk to that person or whatever, and we just, we haven't gotten responses and we're just, we're concerned. So.
Okay, I will help you with that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Great, Kathleen, thank you very much. The next one is Lisa Marie. Lisa Marie, good evening. How are you tonight?
Hi, Doc, how are you?
I am outstanding. Welcome.
Thank you. So I had a question. I know Dr. Varley mentioned that there would be a survey going out to sixth and 12th through 12th grade students tomorrow. Now, I'm a parent of twins in second grade, so that doesn't really apply to me. But my question is around the scheduling. So when are we looking to, or are we working toward going to Plan A for at least our elementary children? As they have already done in Chatham and Summit, and it was announced this week that Madison will be moving to their Plan A, which, you know, as we all know, is a half day in person for everybody who wants it. So that's my, my concern is that, you know, are we working toward that? Is there a benchmark we need to meet to hit that? Are we waiting for shields? What are we, we waiting for to get to Plan A?
So we are working on it. I will definitely tell you, we've spent a lot of time discussing on what our next steps are. The survey tomorrow will go out to staff members as well as our six through 12 students, kind of getting their feedback on the current model. And then hopefully by the end of next week, I will be making announcement about our next steps. And to answer your question, we are waiting on some barriers. We will definitely be implementing those in the classrooms if we do move to, to Plan A. So, but we are working behind the scenes, working diligently to try to move to our next step.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Lisa, thanks very much. Next person I see is Cheryl Harris. Cheryl, good evening.
Hi, thank you. My question is regarding the Department of Education Coronavirus Relief Fund Grant, which is about $58,000. And how will that be applied this year?
I'll answer this question. We have, actually, we have three different grants that we've gotten so far. We've gotten the initial cares grant, the, we got a grant from the county, and now we got this grant. And we are using all of this money for PPE equipment. The shields that are in the classrooms are disinfecting. So at this point, I hate to say it, but we have spent all of our grant money on getting these supplies to keep the schools moving. So we have spent at least that, if not more, for our PPE, disinfecting, glove thermometers, field.
Thank you.
Great, Cheryl, thanks very much. The next person I see is Kareema Bryant. Kareema, good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. So my name is Kareema Bryant. I have three children in the school. One in eighth grade, one in fourth grade, and one in second grade. They're all fully remote. And similar to what I heard the students say earlier, there does seem to be a heavier focus on those students that are in class. So I felt like several, on at least a few occasions, especially for my older daughter, there, it's very, sometimes hard for her to follow what's going on in class versus what's happening with the remote learning. So I do think there's still some opportu, opportunity, especially for those students who are fully remote, that they have a, a, at least a somewhat similar experience and they are learning the same, at the same level. And I do also want to reiterate the comment that was made earlier about response time for emails.
I will send you an email tomorrow to find out what you're experiencing. Thank you.
I would just add that we, we are definitely improving. Obviously, we're about a month into this right now. And the Lisa feedback that I have heard is that we are improving with this. But as I've heard from parents, even a couple tonight, we still have more to go. And the remote, the remote hybrid environment is challenging. So I'm, I'm thankful for all the work that our teachers have done, for those that have gone to additional training, got practice on Zoom and Google Classroom. That said, I, I also know that there's more that we can improve, given that it's a challenging situation. So thanks for the feedback. We'll certainly follow up. Dr. Varley will certainly follow up with the specifics. And this is the second person we heard also about response time. So we'll make sure that we follow up on that as well. Kareema, thank you very much. The next person I see is Syed Bagarvi. Syed, good evening.
Hi. Hello?
Hi, Syed, good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, hi. I had a follow-up question to my previous questions from summer is, I know they were benchmarking when kids came back to the new year, to the new school year. And I wanted to know how, how were the benchmarkings? Have, have we completed the benchmarking for students? And what about the special needs kids? Because I don't think we got any report cards or some sort of an evaluation report saying that after spring, when we virtually, when we had to go virtual suddenly due to COVID, when they returned, we actually evaluated them for the grade, for the previous year's grade. And then what were the gaps that were found or was there any kind of plan?
So I'm, I'm, I'll start briefly with that and then I'll turn it over to Mr. McKinney. I know I have walked through the buildings and I see the teachers doing the benchmarking in the classrooms. But he will know the more detail, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. McKinney.
Sure. As we discussed, we've been administering benchmarks in various different subject areas. And we're pretty, we're not complete, but we're pretty close to complete and gathering the information. And, and what we found, just as a, a general statement, is the results are mixed and individualized. Some students were able to, you know, do very well, and some students struggled. And, and that's how we're developing our plans for those individual students. During the month of October in the elementary schools, we will be hosting our first parent teacher conferences with, you know, in our K through five schools. And in November, we follow up with that at the middle school. So those discussions will be very personalized and, and talking with parents about what we're seeing, what we identified, and how we can work together to fill those gaps.
Can we get some sort of a plan, like in, in terms of like, okay, we did the benchmarking. And if the kids met the benchmarks, that is, if my daughter moved from third grade to fourth grade and some part of the curriculum was, you know, they weren't unable to finish it. So, and then if they did the benchmark and she met the benchmark, then all's good. But if they didn't meet the benchmark and they had, they needed extra help, what, what is the plan gonna look like? What is the next steps or action items? And then what if somebody didn't meet the benchmarks? Like, you know, they met 50% of the benchmarks, but they didn't meet them. How are we gonna tackle that? Do we have a plan in place? And how are we going to implement this for kids with I E Ps? Can we get some sort of a documented plan that this is what we'll do if they meet the benchmarks? If they don't meet the benchmarks, and this is what we have documented for kids with special needs?
Well, that's, ultimately, that's individualized and that's developed individually. So any, if we, if we were to put together kind of a general plan, that wouldn't be servicing the needs of those students. So as, you know, as I said, we will be following up with parents directly with specific needs at those conferences so that we can talk about individual students and how we can work together to fill those gaps. On the curriculum side, what the teachers and principals and supervisors are working on is identifying both the methodology and the targets to help students reach those benchmarks from the spring, but also advance the curriculum for the current school year. And so we are looking at how do we, obviously, we can't do all of that. How do we successfully accomplish most of that and make the most progress in this current hybrid setting? So there's two, you know, there's the individual student needs, but also the curricular adjustments and, and how we are going to get there and make progress with this year's learning as well.
So would we, so you're saying is we don't have a generic plan for benchmarking? And we will not get results until we meet the individual teachers one on one?
I, no, we are going, we have a, a plan that is derived for the individual needs of the student. It's not on paper. The teachers plan every day to meet the needs and, and put the students in the small groups to assist and group the students appropriately so that they can make progress and reteach as necessary. And then the individual student needs will be directly face to face at the parent teacher conferences.
Scott, I know that we're going to cover student achievement at our next meeting, which is more of our traditional student achievement. Could I ask you to also, as part of that, which we've never had to do before, but just put a little bit more down about some of these, some of these items that you've discussed, just formalize that a little bit more. I know, obviously, not so much for the I E Ps, cause I know that's very individualized. But for the benchmarks that you've done, obviously, we have 12 different grades and dozens of different subject areas. But if you could just put a little pen to paper on, as part of the student achievement, what we're doing with some of the benchmarks, I think we can answer some of these questions and be able to, be able to just share with that as it is a concern for, for, for parents. And it's a, it's a level of achievement. It's just a different level we've never had to experience before. That'd be very helpful.
Where I'm coming, what I'm trying to look at.
Syed, Syed.
Yeah, all I'm saying, yeah. I think we need something on like a documented plan, like if kids haven't met the benchmarks, what does, what are our next steps? And I don't want kids to fall through the cracks. And I know these are unprecedented times and you guys are doing the best you can. But I was just hoping if there was a plan in place, that would be great. Thank you.
So there, there is a plan in place and I will make sure that we share that plan at the November meeting. So thank you. I do not see any other people who'd like to address the board. I'll pause for a second just to make sure that's the case. And with that, I will close the citizens' hearing for, for the session and move on to some of our other board business. We will have an item under new business as well. Administration, if I could, recommendation for administration items. Could all the board members come off of mute?
I'm administrator, and administration items A through D.
Second motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. 15, education.
I'd like to move education items A through C.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Item 16, personnel.
I'll move item 16, A through I.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstein?
Yes, 17, business.
I'll move, there's the 17, A through E. Second.
Motion and a secondary discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstein?
Yes, team finance.
I reviewed the bills and they were all good, so I would like to move item 18A.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Penna?
Yes.
Mr. Dequilla?
Yes.
Mr. Joya?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Casano?
Yes.
Dr. Kristinino?
Yes.
Mrs. Kirsch?
Run away.
Helen? Helen?
Hello?
Mrs. Kirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Reinstein?
Yes. Moving to other new business, I have one item for new business tonight that relates to full day kindergarten. As all of you know, our current school environment is, is operating in a less than ideal situation based on all the COVID work we've had to do. We have a hybrid learning model and we have students in school every other week. As we previously, previously shared at all of our meetings, our focus this year is on closing the achievement gap and making sure that we improve both the remote learning experience and the hybrid model. We're providing some additional training, some professional development for teachers, both in the technology as well as in the operations of the school. Currently, we have full day kindergarten scheduled to roll out in September of 2021. Implementation of full day kindergarten is a significant undertaking for the district. Would require, will require changing in staffing and budgeting, in transportation, as well as some facility changes. Additionally, full day kindergarten was a component of the referendum that we proposed last year. And as many people know, we subsequently postponed that referendum due to the impacts related to COVID-19. Over the past couple of weeks, both the Curriculum Committee and the Facilities Committees have met to review full day kindergarten and the proposed recommendation. And we have a joint recommendation from both of those committees, both the Curriculum Committee and the Facilities Committee to postpone the full day, the universal full day kindergarten until September 2022, which would be a one-year delay. This will also include postponing the referendum until the 2021, 22 school year at a date that will be to be determined. We would plan to continue the pilot fee-based full day kindergarten for, for next year, which would be a second year of that pilot. So I want to share with the whole board that that is the recommendation from both the Curriculum Committee and the Facilities Committee. And I want to just make sure that if there are any other comments or questions based on that. Okay, so thank you to all of those who will do that. We will make sure that we communicate that more formally in our, in, in Dr. Varley's next update. Thanks to both those committees for putting in the work that was done to date and for looking and analyzing the decision that, that was in front of us. That the entire, both those committees felt that the focus truly needs to be on this year, on the achievement gap and on student achievement for this year. And both, and both of these other items can be postponed one year, although not an ideal situation as we shared in previous occasions, our dedication towards full day kindergarten. But this is the recommendation for both those groups. Is there any other new business to come before the board tonight? Not seeing any. Our next meeting is on November, want to help me out? It's on the side of the book. It is on November 12th, so our next meeting is on Thursday night, November 12th. We will be discussing student achievement, as I just previously mentioned. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Move. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending this evening. Have a good rest of the night. Good night.
Good night.